The time is now 7:30, and I would like to call this monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorothy, yes. Trustee Vivani, yes. Trustee Humphrey, yes. Trustee Felicia, here. Trustee Stapleton, here. President Gray, here.
Thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Three, Welcome to Our Visitors. Thank you very much for your service to the library, your interest in the library. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Four, the Approval of Last Month's Minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes?
Just a quick spelling correction on my intent. You have to say the land acknowledgement.
Oh, yep, that one. Good catch.
As far as anything, I'm Caitlin Delmar.
I know. I just, I got it. I've been reading these years.
Any other questions or comments regarding the minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes with that slight modification.
Sound out.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the July 28th, 2021 minutes that has been seconded, subject to the modification. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorothy, yes. Trustee Vivani, yes. Trustee Humphrey, yes. Trustee Felicia, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Gray, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the minutes. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters. Caitlin, can you let us know how we're doing?
All right, we're doing pretty well. We are 58.3% through FY '21 as of this set of financial reports. Our revenue collected is at 53.6%. We do anticipate seeing some per capita grant funds before the end of the year. A few libraries have received their per capita grant funds and was fully funded. So we're hoping to see those roll in soon since that is one of the largest, other than our tax levy, that is one of our largest revenue items. On the Library Capital Replacement Fund, you'll see there are three invoices, the final one for the roof, the first invoice for our lighting controls and LED retrofit project, and then the final one from malaria engineering on the relay panel project. And then the only other big thing to note in July is that this was a three payroll month, since we are 26 Ks per year, that does happen twice a year, and then July was a week.
I did notice the three K rolls.
Yeah. It's like, wait, that's a big number. Over to you.
Anyone have any questions or comments regarding the financial matters?
Um, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented and has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Dorothy, yes. Trustee Vivani, yes. Trustee Humphrey, yes. Trustee Felicia, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Gray, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Do you have any public comment on agenda items? Okay, thank you. We're now on to Public Comment on Other Library Business. Okay, we're now on to Agenda Item Number Eight, A, Land Acknowledgement. How do you want to proceed?
I will give a little introduction, and I'll give the floor over to Van McGarry and Cindy Catry, and they've determined who wants to speak. Jonathan did let me know that there were a couple of questions, and Van has prepared some information for you about that. So just as an introduction, it was in early in 2021, we really began our Equity University Inclusion efforts at the library. And at that time, our own Assistant Director, Jen Rieske, who is involved in the Illinois Library Association's Best Practices Committee, was working with that committee on land acknowledgements and best practices in that arena. About a little bit after that, we received a contact from a patron through our library's chat reference, asking about the library doing a land acknowledgement. And Van McGarry very nicely brought that forward to Jen and I, asking if this would be possible. And Jen said, oh, I'm working on that with ILA. So we decided to move forward. The group, so Van really has, and maybe thank you to Van, she has been our lead researcher. She has been the primary author and has really taken the lead overall on this project. And working with Jen and I was also Cindy Catry, our Public Relations Manager, who was the lead on partnerships and contacts with outside organizations and making sure that we were getting good input, that we were finding partners in the community and using those partnerships well. So the four of us started working on this. And then in March, the Village Council in Downers Grove was asked to work on a land acknowledgement. And they said, oh, let's direct our staff to reach out to the library and the Historical Society about maybe working together. Well, since we were already working on this, we'd already been in contact with the Downers Grove Museum about the history of Downers Grove, just to see if we started there, to see if they had any information about the original peoples of this area. And they were the ones who directed us to Dr. John N. Lowe from Ohio State University that they'd been working with, who was also working with beautiful organizations at the time on land acknowledgements. So that's where we started. And Van has had a number of phone calls with him, asked him a lot of questions. He's been really great as a consultant for us. And then Cindy had reached out to a number of potential partners in our area that included the Midwest Soaring Foundation, which is actually headquartered in Lockport, Illinois, and Joseph Scanyberg Schloss has also helped us on the consulting side. So when the village came to us, we were prepared. After some discussion amongst ourselves, we really felt like this was work that the library could do as an institution of learning and with professional researchers on staff. This was a great way for us to take those best practices and make a land acknowledgement, a suite of resources that could be used by any organization in Downers Grove, so that they could take that information and customize the land acknowledgement to their own organization, utilize the resources to be able to do this for their own. So we reached out to the government entities and Historical Society and let them know what we were doing. So months of work, primarily by Van and Cindy, and we now have not only the land acknowledgement, we have a beautiful suite of resources. If you go to DG dot, uh, BGlibrary.org/land, you can see Cindy's hard work on the draft webpage for the land acknowledgement that includes all of this information, as well as FAQ, resource links, book lists, there's a lot of information there. The board did receive that first set of draft links early in July, and there were some edits to the draft land acknowledgement and particularly to the extended version, which is a really well, I will say to Van, well-written summary of the history of Native peoples in the Downers Grove and Chicagoland area that includes a lot of citations and a lot of information. So that was sent to you all, and we are here to finalize this land acknowledgement. We've been talking about it for months, I've been reporting on it. So there were some questions from the board about the use of the words genocide and forced displacement or killing and forced relocation. And Van has prepared some information about that and about why, I don't know why we went a little further. Julie, can you?
Maybe I'll just, just so the board and everyone kind of has kind of a full context, I'll kind of share my thoughts on those questions. And then I think it'd be good to, if the board then could just kind of share other comments, so that then Van and Cindy could just respond to kind of, you know, the comments we have as, at that point, I think it's probably a good way to start. My, well, does anyone else have any initial comments? Should I just start with mine?
Mine is started again.
Okay, okay. So the, I think it was a combination of a couple of things that, you know, where I had some concern. The land acknowledgement, and the one that's going to be placed on the two entrances, I really had no problem at all with the first, I think it was three sentences. The part that, and I can't necessarily, it's hard for me to fully describe why it bothers me, but the last sentence of, "We invite you to take a moment of reflection to consider the genocide and forced displacement of non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples," not questioning the statement itself, I'm just sort of questioning, having that at the entrance of each of the doors, you know, as people are coming and going from the library. And I'm just sort of interested in the board's thoughts on that. The land acknowledgement for kids, that one took me more, I guess by surprise, I guess, in the sense that this is maybe, you know, a parent, a nine-year-old who's back in that area, you know, she learned to read basically at a library. And the idea of her, I don't know where it's going to be placed, but you know, as she's learning to read, reading something that's talking about killing and forced removal of Native peoples, kind of that plaque being in the kids' area, I just, that to me just seems like a nonstarter. If parents who are walking in want to share this information, we have the resources, they see the resources, we can put the resources in other places. I just felt like that language was very strong for, I think you, I think you were maybe trying to soften it up or maybe make it more understandable for children, which I appreciate. It's just, the language itself, just, I was kind of really taken aback by it. But those were my, I think, just initial kind of overall, and a couple other smaller comments, but I just want to open it up to other members of the board to get your thoughts on kind of my initial comments and any thoughts you may have as well.
I think, you know, just first and foremost, thank you for all of the work.
Yes, thank you.
I think the fact that we have this database and this whole system in place and everything is huge. But yeah, I think similarly to what John said, this really the word gives of the plaque that kind of took me the back. And it's, there's no denying that this is obviously the reality of what took place. And I certainly don't want to, you know, kind of brush it under the rug, but it's, my concern is that people will read it and they'll kind of have just an adverse reaction to that last sentence and just kind of shut down their learning of the situation, I guess is the best way I can describe it. And I feel like what would have started out as them having an open idea, thinking, oh, it's beautiful that we're honoring the land and who it originally belonged to, that just gets lost into, oh my God, I can't believe that's a genocide on the library. And I just don't want the people we're trying to reach to use that as an excuse to shut down their learning of the topic.
What was your reaction to the children's?
That was, I think similarly, that was just, again, my concern is that parents are going to similarly be like, oh my God, like more wrapped up in the fact that there's that word killing in this versus like, okay, let's talk about what the reality of this is, let's talk about what happened to, on this land, you know?
It's funny, because to me, the word killing, I rather just say genocide. Honestly, because my kids, I know what killing means, my kid might not, my kids know, but my kids are genocide means. And then they have to ask me, and that gives me the opportunity to talk. Does that make sense? So it's, it's almost not, obviously, we think a little bit differently about this because I want my kids to, you know, to learn about. For me, I just felt like it was a lot of words. And I was thinking like, we just gotta say what it is and just say it. Like, and, and I guess, I understand that we have so many different Native peoples who lived here, because I, a lot of the land acknowledgements that I've been part of, we start, you know, with the names of the, like acknowledging those people. And this feels very general and not specific enough, and I think that that feels odd to me, because I'd rather that, say we acknowledge that we sit on the lands of the blah, 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 people. And I know, I see that there's just so many, and that maybe makes it a bit point, but I feel like we're being really ambiguous and it's somehow just, it doesn't settle right with me because it doesn't seem authentic and it feels very performative to them. And I don't want it to be that, I don't want it to be that authentic. I know you want it to be that authentic. So that was, to me, I think, the part that felt off. But I don't, I don't have, it's just more, I'd rather just say genocide because I think that it's genocide, and then if a three-year-old reads it because they're learning words, then that's the opportunity to talk about it. But I don't know, something just felt off, and I don't know what it was. And I, you know, I mentioned another word, but something just felt inauthentic, which isn't the right word because you worked so hard on this, so I'm just, but I don't know, I don't know what I'm trying to say. I just can't figure out the right, something's either missing or there's, or there's too much of others.
I learned a lot from the extended version. I love all the sources that are referenced, and it's very educational, I think very, very appropriate for a library. When I learned the plaques for the first time today, I thought, it comes across negative to me. If I'm coming in and coming to open my mind, it made me shut down a little bit when it take a moment to think about this. Like, I could do that when I go to the post office, I could do that when I go to the schools, and I could go to all these Downers places, but it's going to be tagged with, it almost felt like this was the exact circle that this all happened at, as if the library is on one particular area, and it's really all of Downers Grove, correct? All of the land. And so I didn't want a negative connotation to, or to also make you think, thinking is good, but to have those last sentences did also, I loved the beginning ones, but the last sentences caused me to feel negative.
Do you mean negative like guilt, or do you mean negative like uncomfortable? I'm only asking because I think there's, I think it's two different things. I think there's a, I think there's a, like, I feel now uncomfortable because I am a settler, like I'm a settler, we're all right. So is it like, because I think, I think that there's, there's two different things that are happening, and so I think that we have to figure out what it is that makes us uncomfortable as a word, or what makes us feel, that was going to be my comment, too. So, you know, I had solid two points, so maybe some of the other one I've had before now, but you know, I've been hearing what Jonathan saw, so now. You know, when I read it, I did feel uncomfortable, and I, you know, personally, I was trying to like interrogate that, like, why? Was it, it built things, like what is in a negative word, and what wasn't? And I mean, when we heard from, um, it's sitting in discomfort, it's actually working hard and moving forward, this process of acknowledging, you know, all these different injustices and balances that we have in our world right now. So I'm wondering, in kind of general terms, if the land acknowledgement, especially being on plaques and with the library, is it an opportunity to be inside, so like open conversations, whether it's with a kid, or whether it's with someone inside, whether it's, you know, whatever it is, and does this, this word help us do that? And I don't know the answer, but I'm just, I'm thinking about that, is just as a way to open up rather than shutting down. So I'm wondering if there's something to think about, the way we can put this off sentences, kind of this triggering moment that it is for people, and it's words that we're not used to seeing, reference to the library, might make us uncomfortable, but is that enough to start that conversation or maybe in a different way, bringing it, so that it, so that it, again, doesn't, it doesn't put up that barrier, because most people aren't used to somebody discomfort, whether, you know, whether they should or not. So I'm, someone else compared, I was thinking about, you know, I don't have to use it like a woman or not, but here's what this is, and now that we're shutting down, that this can, like, the woman can't do it. I don't know.
Sorry, I do like what you said, Karla, about just it maybe being more custom to Downers Grove. Because I do think, like, you know, my kids go on like a tour, I know it's like an elementary school tour, like a, you know, Downers Grove history, and they know about Curtis, Downer, and Pierce, and all these people. And I, I love the idea of stepping back a couple hundred years and adding all of this very important information. I just am concerned that the general population, or maybe that's not what I was going to say, but like, I just want it to, to be a plaque that makes people say, okay, I want to learn more, not, oh my gosh, like, I'm turned off, I'm shut down, I'm uncomfortable, and I just want to get out of the situation. Yeah.
And I think I've, we have told you this, there's, like, along the Riverwalk in Chicago, there's a big sign that just says, you know, it was, it was done by the city, it's very nicely done, and it just says, "You're standing on Potawatomi land." And like that, to me, is just, it doesn't get into, but it makes you kind of interested to learn more about Potawatomi, isn't like, in, you know, without sending any other message. I was just thinking of how to bridge kind of what you were saying, Karla, about like getting specific, with then also causing people to like research further the specifics in trying to, because you naturally will learn about these issues kind of as you research those particular points, doesn't have to be described, I guess, outright.
I mean, I get, I think the point of a land acknowledgement is to acknowledge that if we're settlers, right, like, we're on, we're living on stolen land, right? That's the point of a whole acknowledgement, so we're on stolen land. And so, again, none of the killing part bothers me, I wish it was genocide instead of the word killing, because I think killing just sounds, it's like clear, and so I wish it just said genocide, but that, none of that bothers me, I think it's, for me, it's just, I think we're saying too much, because I don't, the extended version is very knowledgeable, and people can go with information. I think like, we just say like, we're acknowledging we're on the land of these people, and this is what happened to them. And I, and I think for me, it's a lot about, we talked about the last meeting, that those Native peoples are still here, it's not something just in the past, it's something that's still here, and they still live on this land, and they still, you know, hopefully come to our library and hopefully feel welcome to come to our library. I don't know, and like the whole thing about plaques, I guess, for me personally, is like, I don't think it plaques really ever, I mean, I do sometimes, but that plaque is, like, there's one outside of the school that maybe, that's our house, some people, right? I know it's not, but sometimes that happens, but I don't know, I, I want it to be in a way that we're honoring things the correct way and not the incorrect way, just so they must feel better. So I don't know what that is, I don't have a bridge that, that we're correctly honoring and what, that we just stand for this, stand for this, you know? Sorry, Dave. Dave's like, I haven't talked for like a whole minute yet.
No, no. You're speaking words that I wanted to speak, and I'm not helping with it. I have studied this thing a bit, not just this one, but with some other organizations, and I'm thrilled that we're even talking about doing this, and that we're going to do something. And to be honest with you, the way it was presented to us is factual, true, unsettling, and I feel that it should be. That said, I'm not a parent. And if that is in fact a very off-putting, I don't mean off-putting in a shallow way, but I mean, if you think that that will get in the way of the message, then I'm open to be working with it. I don't want to just take that totally out, because I feel that that is a major part of the point of what we're doing. It is technology that we not only stole land, but displaced and in many cases wiped out the people. And there's difficult, it's difficult to find a euphemism that works for that. Now, your, your logic that says genocide is probably, probably even a better word because it will provoke some discussion rather than just being off-putting, but that's a, that's a level of detail that I'm not sure I'm prepared to, to, to push, but I feel strongly that we need to do this, and I don't want to oversell it, because it is, I have heard of a number of other organizations that have done this, and some of them, like, quite frankly, like what you said, you're standing on Potawatomi land, well, okay, what does that mean? What is that, that doesn't, that, yeah, okay, somebody else who's familiar. That isn't enough of the point to land acknowledgement. And the other point is, of course, that it's not just past tense, we're still with it.
I think everyone agreed, I should speak for I'm agreement about that.
And one other point, I, one other point, I kind of, if there's some way, I've seen a lot of these statements, and many of them, and my favorites, I think, actually name tribes. And sure, there are a bunch of them, but there are a few primary ones. I'm looking at another one, I do, because one, two, three, four, five, six drives me. And it, it somehow brings up the reality of, it's not just these people. So I'd like to consider naming, and as, as an appropriate way that we can, somewhere near the top. But as far as the, removing the, the genocide part, I would prefer not to, but if I find that truly gets in the way of the message we're trying to convey, and parents feel strongly about that, I will open my ears to that.
And just one other point, just for context, too, like, I had, I didn't have a lot of time to do this, but I did look at six or seven other land acknowledgement statements, including from the Field Museum, or St. Ed, I think, I think it was the Field Museum that listed the tribes, and it's a very nice statement, the Old Park Public Library, the Art Institute of Chicago, the Arizona State University, I mean, there's a lot of land acknowledgement statements that are out there. Of the ones I looked at, I didn't see any reference, like, in the actual statement to genocide, killing, displacement of, you know, Indigenous or Native American, natives to the land. I mean, that was, it's built in kind of to the, you know, when you get into the frequently asked questions and kind of the more robust analysis below that, but the actual statements themselves are just, like, I feel like ours went further than the ones that, you know, that I had reviewed, so.
My final comment in listening and taking in what has been said so far is, as trustee and thinking of the whole community and in the statements we've made in the past, get it, seeing.
Masks are required for all patrons.
We've seen, like, you know, different sides of each of our statements, and I see of the two sides, one side is shutting them, that, in my sense, and not open-minded to it, and I want the statement to open minds versus. And I want the statement to open minds versus create people hostility and anger to a statement. I guess that that's what I'm, I do want it to make you stop and think and decide if this statement makes you uncomfortable, but I don't want reactions to be, this place is not welcoming to me, this place is not, if it seems unwelcoming, and I think we want them to, if you have tribes, like, oh, I should learn about the tribe. Something, I, I want it to teach more than shut down who they exactly are.
Yes, I have one, one more to comment on, and that is that I'd be, I would be interested to ask the question of you and of the New Western organization and the people, what they think about this issue? In other words, um, this is their land, how, how do they feel we should acknowledge the fact that this is their? And they might agree with you, that's, they might, they might say, yeah, that's a little bit strong, it's maybe too off-putting, maybe we should open more organizations to other than this. I don't know, but I'd be interested in their comments, and maybe you already know the answer to this question.
It's a perfect segue.
So to address some of the questions that we felt that were brought forward this evening, I'll try to speak up. So as, to speak to why we chose to not acknowledge specific tribes in the shortened version, um, our collaborators, our consultants, uh, who are from different tribes, including Potawatomi, Ojibwe, and other tribes that were originally on this land, and still are, they felt very strongly that we acknowledged all native peoples, because there are so many tribes that originally were on this land, and to name just a few specific tribes would be an injustice to all the people that lived here, and or were forced to move from their original homelands in surrounding areas, and then lived here for a time, or moved through here, et cetera. And so, we are acknowledging all native peoples who sometimes lived in the Downers Grove and Chicago area. And they were, um, our collaborators were, felt very strongly that a land acknowledgement should acknowledge all native peoples and their historical legacy of colonialism against all native people. And we tried to, um, name some of the tribes that we saw in the FAP session, and talked about being specific to this area. But the native peoples and organizations that we talked to were very passionate about us making sure that we acknowledge all native people. And we understand that most land acknowledgements out there, um, do name specific tribes, and this is our diagnosis for them. But, you know, we take pride in being a leader in doing EDI work, and so we're following what we believe, um, is the correct way to do a land acknowledgement. And so, uh, in addition to that, the language of genocide and forced removal, uh, the native organizations and individuals we consulted with, felt very strongly those were needed to be included. Um, and the resources that we sent out, um, originally in line knowledge folder, including Native Governance Center, uh, Native Land, and others, also talked about that. The non-territorial folder, name the actions that were done, including words like forced removal, killing, forced displacement, genocide. And that goes to what they, uh, they and our collaborators talked about, is what is the point of the land acknowledgement, and what are we trying to do? Who is it for, and what are we trying to say? Are you just doing this to check off a box that you did a land acknowledgement? You know, you don't want it to be just a token gesture, you don't want it to be a performative statement, you want it to actually say something and do something. And one of the things they talked about was a land acknowledgement should be a way to inspire others, members of your community, other institutions, to take action. And whether that is also to do their own land acknowledgement, or to consider, you know, and reflect on the issues brought up in the land acknowledgement, um, to learn more about the issues that we talked about, um, et cetera, there, there should be some action, not just, you're on this land. And so, these are issues that we took very seriously into heart when we were creating this document.
Yeah, sure. So something that I'd like to add is that, you know, when talking to, um, our consultants and the native, our native partners in this, is that they named that most land acknowledgements out there are hollow and performative, and actually are more harmful to the native people that they know and themselves, they might, you know, in their experiences, than helpful, because they do not have a therefore statement, they don't have a call to action kind of at the end. And, um, they were, like Van said, they were very passionate about being able to name the injustices, and being able to, um, really ask people just to like think about it. Um, give people a moment to kind of hold that space in their, in, in that moment in time, and think about what they have just read. Um, I would, I would say that Van's being really modest here, like, um, our partner, the New Western Foundation, loves her land acknowledgement so much, and the fact that it names these things, like, so much that he wants to share it with other partners, um, and, you know, he's read through it and has said, thank you. Thank you for listening to our stories, for naming these issues, for naming our concerns about how we want to be inclusive of all people, uh, native people, and really for, um, just really understanding the injustices. And so, I, you know, I feel very strongly that we should keep, um, kind of that call to action in, because they said that, the therefore, that, that call to action at the end is what makes a land acknowledgement, um, that, that's what keeps it from being performative. Um, as for like the kids, the kids', um, version, I just want to note that we did have our children's librarians, they actually took the shortened version, and they wrote it. So with all of their education of, you know, working with kids, and they know that population really well, they are the ones that, you know, decided, like, this is not, you know, let's not talk down to our kids, maybe about it. So, um, you know, I think that, you know, that maybe merits a little bit of thought. And, you know, I agree with what Van is saying, and, you know, thinking about what a land acknowledgement is supposed to do, um, I, I, it's not meant to make us feel comfortable, to be quite honest, it's to make us think about, you know, what happened here. And so, um, you know, when we were talking about the plaques, what we were talking about doing is something that would be able to change over time, since this is a living document. It wouldn't be something that's like cast in bronze or anything like that, we would have like an acrylic, um, display, uh, kind of like a, kind of like the, um, the bookend piece of, or the, what do you call those? The end caps? That say like, you know, over here is like biography, and over there is nonfiction, but it would be large and on the wall. So then, as our land acknowledgement changes and shifts, as our partnerships grow and we learn more, and as time goes on, um, we'll be able to change that out, too. So, um, if, I don't know if that like helps, I also just know that, you know, what we're putting in there, like, we, we acknowledge it, because this is a living document, so things will, you know, be, are being, changing.
What other organizations have they worked with in crafting land acknowledgements?
Uh, they worked with the, um, Native Observatory, I don't remember which town it was, Dr. Lowe worked with, um, the, I want to say the work, um, he consulted with the Field Museum one, um, and they, um, can't remember which other ones, but he's, they worked on dozens and dozens of them.
And I believe he consulted on the Newbury Library, and the Carter Foundation were the two that he was working on when we first contacted him.
Right, yeah.
Also, I just want to, um, to note for all of you, go to dglibrary.org/land, that is that draft webpage, and in the FAQ section, there is a whole question about why does the library not mention specific tribes in this land acknowledgement? And then also, can you provide information about specific tribes in this area? And as it's stated in the extended document, there were a lot of tribes that moved through here, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen listed in that. And that is, those are just the known ones that we know for sure came and stayed in the Chicagoland area for any length of time.
That's a valid statement, I, uh, I haven't thought that through as well as I should have. Uh, I think your explanation is a good one there, because we're talking about thousands of years.
And we had a lot of discussion as a group about performative statements versus how do we, as an organization, ensure that where we are supporting native peoples in our community, um, in a way that is meaningful moving forward. And so, we've, we've had a lot of discussion about that, and a lot of discussion about how, how in there for statement, because Dr. Lowe in particular was adamant from the very beginning that there had to be a therefore, or it was going to be a performative statement. So that was, was something that was with us both with development and all this.
And I would just add on, if, um, I, I do understand that this, the statement, including the shortened one, can cause people to feel uncomfortable. And I think that's okay, I think that EDI work such as this does, um, cause people to question, to think about things that they haven't thought about before necessarily. Um, and we are trying to combat harmful or forgotten narratives, and by taking out, um, that last sentence, or changing it, to soften it, I feel like we're going to be complicit in the continual erasure of the harmful legacy of colonialism, and which is one of the reasons why it's important to have a land acknowledgement. And so, that's, that's one of the reasons why we chose to put in the naming, forced displacement, and genocide. And, but it's really important to have those words in that, and, um.
Well, then why isn't it, why aren't those words in, I mean, these other organizations, I did look at the Newbury Libraries, and those words are not in the statement. And so I'm just, it's, and Julie knows this from, we've worked together for five years, it's like, I think it's important that we move this forward, and at least get to where other people are. But why are we going beyond the Field Museum? And going beyond the Newbury Library, the Art Institute of Chicago, and Arizona State University, and the University of Texas at Austin? It's like, I just, I'm, I'm, that's the part of like, we're, we're not where they're at right now.
I, oh, I was just going to say, I would, I would argue that that's what makes us a leader in EDI. Like, I think that there are a lot of land acknowledgements out there that a lot of native people roll their eyes at. In the same way that there are a lot of anti hate statements out there, that a lot of minorities and PGTs roll their eyes at. And I think that's because they, people are afraid of naming it. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that there's, um, I don't think that we should limit ourselves, because a larger organization is afraid to say those names.
I, I see this as a great opportunity for our library to be a leader in not just Downers Grove, but in the state and the country and the world. Um, for example, I, you know, I did look at the Newbury one, the previous news, I looked at, I can't remember how many land acknowledgements, and I noticed that the Newbury, you know, said that, um, native people, indigenous peoples can be used interchangeably with Native Americans, and, um, excuse me, the Native Americans could be used interchangeably with American Indians, pardon me. And in consulting with, um, native groups, they said, yeah, American Indian is used, but, you know, a lot of people find that offensive, inappropriate, shouldn't really use that. Whereas the Newbury said, oh yeah, it's fine to use that. And so, we went above and beyond in our terminology, FAP, and said, you know, check with the person to see what term they prefer to use. Um, American Indians should only be used if the person, um, says that's what they prefer, or were quoting something. And we went above that too, and said, Indian is representative of person from the country of India. And so, we're not limiting ourselves, we are looking at being a leader in this work. And so, we don't want to just do what everyone else is doing, whatever.
But what about, this is one point that I think maybe, um, Krista brought up earlier. I mean, what about the concern, though, that we're a leader, but there's, it causes people to shut down, and so they don't learn. I mean, I think the more you learn about Native Americans, like, you almost can't help but be sympathetic to kind of, you know, everything that happens. So like, the more someone studies this, the more they're going to, you know, they, they will agree with these statements. But if they see a statement that turns them off, they're not going to study it. And I, I don't see a statement that, that makes you uncomfortable, and then you sit down, that may be uncomfortable, but I'm going to study it more. There, there are some people like that, but that's not, I'd say that's the minority. So I'm just, I'm just sort of curious as to what your responses to that are.
So I would say that, again, going back to what the purpose of the land acknowledgement is, and who it's really for, we are trying to, as it says in there, we are acknowledging the land and honoring native people. So we are not trying to tiptoe around white privilege, we are trying to capture the honest truth of what happened in this area in regards to the land, in regards to land and the native people who were here. So that would be my response.
I would, I would also like to just add that, you know, maybe in a moment, they might look at it and be like, whoa, genocide, that's a big, big word right here, you know? But I would hope that, you know, if somebody's upset about that, they would go home and, as they're thinking about it, they might, exactly what Krista experienced, why, why did I have that reaction? You know, what do I need to think about here? And maybe, um, you know, investigate. And maybe they won't be open to walking upstairs and looking at a book list immediately, but maybe a few hours later, when, when they're still thinking about it, or maybe the second or third time they walk past it, maybe they will be.
Um, I don't want to get too hung up on the issue of leadership and that sort of thing, except I would say that some of the statements that you were quoting, I suspect, were written a few years ago for Van's. And perhaps we can be a little more open and direct in the 21st century. But the other issue that I'm, I'm just very troubled with, thinking of some analogies, some other, some other things. When I was a, when I was a child, my father was in Mississippi, and we used to go visit his ancestral lands down in Mississippi. And he would explain to me, as a child, what used to go on down there, and he would talk about the Kupuks clan and the lynchings. He didn't leave that out. You can't teach children about Emmett Till without the fact that he was murdered. You can't teach the Holocaust without explaining that people were killed. And I'm, I'm not a psychologist, and I'm not an expert at this, and I'm going to be talking, you know, but, but it troubles me that we're afraid to say that much.
So one quick comment, since you just brought up the Holocaust. I brought my children to the Holocaust museum, and they go through that in Downers Grove School, but I, I've been to Austin, I've put myself in an uncomfortable position, and felt the overwhelming experience of being where hundreds of thousands of people have died. And, um, but I guess what, Sydney, when you said it, I wish we could have our recording up just so your voice, so that no one misinterprets it. You sounded like the yoga instructor, like, I would. You sounded like the yoga instructor, like, I would like you to take a moment to reflect. And then genocide didn't come across, but if it comes, like finger pointing if someone misreads it. You know how you always say you should maybe have that as a conversation versus putting it in the email to someone? Because it could be misinterpreted and I think that is part of my fear. Because when you, when you say it, let's take a moment and reflect, I have no problem with that. But if someone reads a sentence incorrectly, that could be concerning. Maybe we have an audio. Ask him to come in.
With a mask behind her.
Well, the other, the other point, just to go back to, I think Dan, you may have mentioned that, sort of, you, this is a living document. And so, I mean, again, this is my, this is my approach is that what is wrong with having we adopt a scaled down version? I, I don't want to adopt a land acknowledgement, but then we have to scale it down afterwards, I guess is my point. Is that we adopt the language, there's a lot of negative feedback, we come back as a board and say, you know what, this was just not the right decision to, for whatever reason. We shouldn't have put it in the kids' area, you know, whatever the situation is. And so what's, I guess, and I'm just, I'm just thinking online here, like, what's, what are your thoughts on like, acknowledge, you know, adopting a land acknowledgement that addresses our concerns, or at least my concerns, and then knowing that this thing, that it can be modified in the future?
I guess I'm wondering, like, are we talking about the kids' version only or like the whole thing, you know?
Well, I'll, I'll change.
I feel like there's, we're talking about both of them, like interchangeably, but I do think that like your concerns are very separate.
So for me, the, the only problem, the concern I have with a, with a land acknowledgement statement, the non-children's version is that last sentence. With respect to the land acknowledgement for kids, I personally, like, I would, I would start with putting, adopting a land acknowledgement, putting it on the two items. And not doing it all at once. And so, you know, you then assess, like, okay, we are now at where all of these other organizations are. We don't, I mean, we don't have to stop there.
Well, I guess for me, the harm in doing that, the scaled down version of the language would be harms to the Native community. They would see that they're, they would not be seen in the land acknowledgement because they're not naming what was done. And so, and so that's the harm that I see in scaling that down in the short version part.
Well, and I think, and I think we may, I'm just, I think I'm just not maybe on the same page with, maybe this is my fault, with the purpose of it. Because I feel like the library is a place where we learn about these issues. And so I want this to open someone's mind and to reach people. I don't, to me, I don't view it as being, we're doing this solely to acknowledge the Native American indigenous people that were on this land. Because, because we can go much further with this, describing all of the atrocities, which may even be more. You know, help them be seen even more. But, I mean, you did stop, I mean, so we could have gone further.
Well, we tried to cover as much as we could and we covered everything that our collaborators passionately shared with us. It was important to them that we made sure that we included.
From like the partnership aspect, I worry that the harm in not releasing that last section is that they, both sets of our partners, right? Dr. Lowe and the Midwest Orient Foundation explicitly said, having that in there is extremely important to us. The therefore statement makes it, like, it keeps it from being performative. And that is like, that is the piece of the puzzle that's really important to them. And then by not having that, when we are asking them to come out and after we've done all this work with them, it's basically saying to them, yeah, we heard you, we listened to you, we had it in all the drafts we showed you. And then we didn't care enough about your, how you felt about it.
Can I just read something from the Native Governance Center? And this is one of the places where we went to find best, really best practices for land acknowledgements. And they talk, they have a couple of bullet points. And it's, it quotes, why am I doing this land acknowledgement? If you're hoping to inspire others to take action to support indigenous communities, you are on the right track. And then the next bullet point, use appropriate language. Don't sugarcoat the past. Use terms like genocide, ethnic cleansing, stolen land, enforced removal to reflect actions taken by colonizers. And then Native Land, which is another organization that we look to for best practices, talked about how land acknowledgements can easily be a token gesture rather than a meaningful practice. All settlers, including recent arrivals, have a responsibility to consider what it means to acknowledge the history and legacy of colonialism. The history and legacy of colonialism involve genocide and forced displacement. It is vital that we name the truth. And let's see, naming specific actions like genocide, calling others to action, and making sure we aren't just issuing a performative statement or making a token gesture. If we're truly acknowledging Native peoples and honoring them, it is vital that we acknowledge and name genocide enforced removal. By omitting these words from our land acknowledgement, especially the shortened versions, we're erasing the legacy of colonialism against Native people. And that's just, wanted to share those words with you. Because as we were going through the process with this, it was reading those words over and over from places like the Native Governance Center, from Native Land, hearing it from Dr. Lowe, hearing it from Mr. Tron, hearing it over and over from those partners that that was really important. It's why it's coming to you in this form.
I think this is really also related to national law, this is a little bit hard. And so I wanted to say two statements that you said, I under, they both are, I don't think both of them are justice law statements. So the two statements you said, one, that it should invite people to take action. So it should make action the therefore statement, right? And I think that's, you're absolutely right, but that kind of makes it go above and beyond performance statement. It's perfect, so having that, that's a really helpful. And then also with the specific meaning of the things that Native peoples. I actually wonder, this is kind of one of the, I wonder if the called actions needs to be stronger. So whereas, so if someone is taking a moment to watch them, considering the assignment versus what? Well, it's beyond kind of sitting with them, whether that's kind of sitting with you for a moment or for hours, I would say you're saying, Cindy. What is the thing that we want them to do? Considering is good, or you can, people, it's a first step, right? Like, okay, yeah, I didn't even think about that. But what else? Like, what is this thing? Actually, in the kids' statement, I love the phrase think it hard. Because that, if I had to go beyond the considering and into the, yeah, you know, why, why am I feeling totally that, you know, even doing this as a sentence suggests it to more than all the specific peoples or the things that happen here, or what other organizations we contribute into, to further the causes of Native peoples. So I'm wondering, is even, you know, kind of, I don't mean to say this in a kind of insubordinate way, but like, can we balance the consider the genocide with and? Go there, go and figure, like, go and take a step, a positive step, like, go beyond, like, okay, yes, with the genocide. And yet you might feel really terrible, there are reasons about that analogy. Then, then what are we asking people to do? Is it have consciousness with their family? Is it go, is it, you know, contribute to figure out what the organization's existence? Dive deeper into this analogy itself because there's so much, so many resources involved. So I, you know, and I, I think that, again, the things we should drive from our organization would be helpful in kind of stating the purpose of the language acknowledgement. And I think that action part is the more important thing. It says not just about sitting with them, it's that in sitting with them, you're something that will help.
Really great point, and I'm thinking about the signs. And perhaps we need the signs to actually say, to learn more, go to dglibrary.org/learn. Because not only is there the land acknowledgement, the extended version with all of its things, if you go on that page, there are also book lists and resource links and links to the webpages of the various tribes that are from this area. So there is a wealth of, there's a wealth of resources there specifically. And perhaps that's something we should do on the signs, you know?
We could put a QR code on there too.
Yeah.
Well, Krista, that, I'm not sure why that kind of resonates with me, but it really does. Because I really like the idea of, you know, if someone does have a problem, the issue of like consider is kind of this amorphous word, but you'd say, go learn more. We're asking you to learn more. This shouldn't be something that you, you don't know now, like, go learn more. That's what we're asking you to do. And or that's what the statement is, is, you know, reflected of. And so that really, I mean, that to me, and going along with Julie's comment of just saying, we invite you to take a moment, it somehow makes the genocide and displacement like easier for me because you will learn that this existed by visiting these resources. And so I'm not sure how we wrote that statement, but I think that input heading to like where someone can go learn more.
Could it just be like the addition of learn more at and then the URL like at the end of the, at the bottom of the, or do you want to change the whole sentence?
Would it be better to, we invite you to take a moment to think and learn about the genocide enforced displacement by non-Native settlers and ongoing injustices against Native people?
Well, I think the reasoning behind the choice of words of reflection and consider is because a land acknowledgement, most often times, is written before an event before a meeting. And that's why when you just read it right before a meeting, it's not like, okay, now take, you know, time to go learn about this. It just was, that's why the choice of word on that way. But in print for, you know, a plaque or, you know, for a news letter, then what you're, what you suggested, really makes total sense, but I'm just thinking about when it's in times that we need it allowed.
The, I was just thinking, and I'm not sure how you add it, whether you do the URL or just sort of think in general about like, use our library or something like that. But just, we invite you to learn more about the genocide. So I took, I moved a couple of things, but just like basically, we invite you to learn more about the genocide forced displacement. And maybe by, tell them how to do it. Can we, I mean, is this something that?
By using the resources?
Well, here's what I was, I mean, we've talked about this for an hour. So I'm just wondering if we, I think we've all aired our comments. I mean, is this something that, I mean, the actual land acknowledgement is like the first week of October. So if we can kind of like get something finalized in September, I'm just wondering if that's.
You already have a planned facilitated discussion with Rashida Graham Washington about the anti hate status framework for the 24th of September, 24th, whatever that day of September that is, that is the main agenda item for that night. And or.
That is the seventh.
The seventh is actually a special committee of the whole meeting and that is a three-hour training on equity, diversity, and inclusion. That is your, the next one is the regular board meeting.
The 22nd.
Yes, there will be no action items on September 7th. That is a board training only, so no action items. That will actually be posted as a committee of the whole meeting. It's the regular September meeting that is the 20th. 22nd?
Yes.
22nd, see, there you go.
Well, here, here.
I don't know what date today is.
I'll be kind of direct here. I'm supposed to go to that meeting in October with the West Orient Organization and so forth. And if we remove the language that they asked us to put in, I'm gonna, I don't know, I'm gonna do it.
You cancel.
I got there, too.
Just don't show up.
Well, I'm supposed to get a session to celebrate this.
Well, we're keeping the words, right?
Well, yeah, or here's, here's. Here's what I was thinking, is that it's, we invite you to learn more about the genocide enforced displacement by non-Native settlers, comma, and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples, comma, by visiting whatever the library, the URL, the resources of this library.
Can you repeat that? I'm just typing it.
What's that? Oh, yeah.
Can you just repeat it?
And this, obviously, like, if other board members don't like it or want to add to it or anything. But I'm just thinking this to say, we invite you, so this is the last sentence, we invite you to learn more about the genocide enforced displacement by non-Native settlers, comma, and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples, comma, by visiting whatever a URL, the library.
dglibrary.org/land. Now, would that be just for the signed version or for all of them?
Well, I guess if we need to figure out, like, what do we do with our land acknowledgement? Like, I'm, I'm a member of who, so we start every meeting with our acknowledgement. Like, we don't see if the meeting comes to order and we say, what was started? And we, we got, like, okay, is that, I mean, is that our goal? Then that URL sounds odd at the end of that. Oh, because we're like, bye. So I, I think that's perfect for like a plaque or something, but I just want to need to order. I think to Van and Cindy's point, there's like three different things now, right? There's the kids' version, there's the land acknowledgement, and then there's this plaque.
Well, what about, oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, we both are building on, we're building on this stuff.
So why not just for the purposes of like a land, the actual land acknowledgement, get rid of the by, visiting, you know, the end? Just saying, we invite, we invite you to learn more about, to learn more of the genocide enforced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native people. So it's really kind of going to Chris's statement of like, we invite you to learn more about the genocide enforced displacement. So basically, I changed one word, I think.
You take out the phrase, take a moment to reflect, and replace it with learn more.
But how, how do we, can we, so here would be my other just, maybe request or, I do like the idea of passing that, saying, this is our land acknowledgement. Doing the flags. But can I, I feel like I just need to work on like the kids' version. Either, either, and so either we just do the same acknowledgement of the kids or we modify it for the kids and work with consultation. It's just, I'm just wondering what the board's thoughts are and Cindy and Dan's.
Well, we had the kids' room manager and their program coordinator. They are the ones who kind of like wrote that, like took the short version that Van had written and then reworked it. So I think I would want to see what they, I personally would want to ask them.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's what I'm just thinking, that it's the bigger, the bigger deal, I think, is the, you know, adopting a land acknowledgement. deal, I think, is the, you know, adopting the land acknowledgement or approving the land acknowledgement, and then how we, you know, may incorporate that into, I'm not even sure if that would require board action, to be honest, like, once we, maybe that's something we could talk about, but like, I think the actual acknowledgement is clearly a board-type item, but to the extent that a library that wants to take and put displays up or other things like, that are consistent with the land acknowledgement in other areas of the library, whether it's the kids area or somebody else, I mean, that's really up to, up to, I mean, that's my initial reaction.
I agree, I, I think that makes sense, and I think that, that once you've done, once you've done this, then, then individual departments can say, well, this is how we're going to use this in our department, and maybe for the kids, one, they have a book list next to it, because kids aren't necessarily going to have that, like, you're not going to be, right? So maybe some for them, and the teen section is different or something, I, I think that's a very good job.
Okay. Does it mean, how's everyone, okay, so then, my last comment.
Yes.
I think my last comment. So if you have a, if, if you have a, I'm, I'm interested in your thoughts on this, but, so in the actual extended version, I, I had only one comment, and it was, I guess two comments, in the, in the last paragraph, we may want to just take that and say, we invite you to, basically make it consistent with the land acknowledgement, we invite you to learn more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just make that language consistent with the.
Right, right, okay.
And that works.
And then the other, um, comment was, there were three references within the la, within the extended version, like where there was references to colonizers, settlers, or said that the white settlers, and I'm just sort of curious as to your, like, inclusion of that, you know, I'm not disputing the facts of the situation, I just, I think in today's society, it's like we sort of try to stay away from, you know, like, identifying by color, and so that's why I was just, where is it?
Okay.
So on page 20, it's listed as page 25.
Um, so we, I, um, use the term white settlers instead of the settlers to make a distinction from, um, other people who settled in the area, so for example, native peoples who were forced from different regions and then settled in this area, um, also, and say, enslaved people who are forced to live in this area, and we specifically name, uh, or use the term white settlers to distinguish from other people who settled in the area.
But I mean, how important is that? Because to me, it's, it kind of goes back to the point, I think, that some of us have made where it's, I don't, in my mind, there's no question that it's like white people we're talking about here, it's just in, when someone reads this, whether that's some trigger for some person to say, oh, they're, you know, they're just biased of using these terms, you know, so I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm interested, obviously, in the other board members' thoughts on, I, I think inclusion of those words.
You know, I wouldn't go to the battle without them, but I think that it's, it's just, Native American people refer to, non-Native American people refer to them as white people.
We all do.
It's a shorthand.
Yeah.
And.
National identity, apparently.
I mean, it, it, I think it's intentional here, but, but maybe in the greater scheme of things, if that's a big issue with somebody, I would go to the battle without them, because it's clear in the statement, they're talking about the settlers as the, the people.
Yeah.
The people.
Right.
Or like colonizers, something like that.
Yeah, the white colonizers or some white settlers.
Uh, they, they were wrong, actually.
We, we can, we can do that if, you know.
I mean, I.
Because they probably were all white.
Yeah.
But.
Well, whether they were or weren't, I think that it's, you can, I mean, you could go, I mean, this, this is an excellent summary, and it also invites people to learn more as well, I just think that, for me personally, I would rather just not grab it and.
I mean, I think that if anybody's reading, like, the extended version, they're invested in learning more already, like, they're probably not, I think that, uh, their white fragility is probably like, they're not, it's not going to be taking a big hit if they're already like that far into the, um, like.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the person who has an open mind and who's reading this, I'm concerned about the person who's saying, a library has bias, and I'm going to read through this and try to find all the places in which they've like.
No, I don't, it's not a bias, it's a fact, right?
What if you change the word settlers and took the word white out and changed it to colonizer?
I mean, I guess for me, like, I'm a colonizer, right? Like, I'm a settler here, I didn't, I just said, I'm on solo plan, so I think that we want to acknowledge the all of us, is like, is I think what you're trying to say, or is that, is that, am I trying to speak, is that what you're trying to say?
It's not so much that I'm, I'm not exactly sure, other than it just kind of, like, I feel like we're saying the same thing just by calling them settlers versus white settlers. Like, to, to me, it's the same thing, except one is slightly just kind of feminine, that's.
Well, today's suggestion of, would it be okay then to just use colonizers and settlers?
I think that's, I think that's.
Or we have white settlers, we can make that thing pretty simple.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, library, right.
Okay, because everybody don't, have to interpret, I should, if you colonize, you use, and all these people have to say, anyways. I just looked for the word colonizer in there, and there is no reference to white colonizers.
Okay, we can use a colonizer.
Okay, so I think with those changes, how about for the.
Okay, I apologize, you guys hold up the budget right.
So, so.
By capability, we're not.
So, so I know, I know that, I know that Cindy and Van have taken, have taken excellent notes, and Julie, and you also have a video to consult if needed, Dave, do you have a?
Well, I, before we vote in this, I, I just like to read it, I've read one time.
There you go, I can read this out.
The extended version?
I have to say, you might need to, it's right in there.
Okay, oh, and Caitlin as well.
I'm going to appreciate that.
So I, you have to read it, too, if you want me, I mean, I can.
If you would like to read it out, I'm ready.
I will read it out. Okay, this is the land acknowledgement that is listed at Agenda Item 8A that we will be requesting approval on. We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded traditional and ancestral lands, whole lands of native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-native settlers and the ongoing injustices against native peoples, period.
Signs will ever be there.
Yes, maybe just under even or something, it's not really official, you know. Okay, um.
And, and they attempt this to, is this going to be like bronze plaque or something?
No, it, it will be a changeable one.
Changeable, okay.
Do we, do we have a motion to approve the land acknowledgement as, as we've discussed?
I agree with that.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the land acknowledgement, as we've discussed, that has been seconded, Caitlin, can you proceed to roll call, please?
Tessie, yes. Tessie, yes.
Yes.
Tessie, no.
Yes.
Tessie, yes. Tessie, yes.
Yes, thank you very much, we have approved the land acknowledgement as discussed, and I want to thank you again for all of your hard work, you, your passion showed through on this, it's excellent, and very convincing as well. I wish I could see the smiles, the smiles that are there.
I'd also like to say thank you to everybody who's helped with this discussion.
All right, we're now on to Agenda Item 8A.
The children.
9A, the fiscal year 2022 budget levy, and I will, um, review some of this, I think as we've, um, as we have discussed the last two meetings, the proposal is to increase the levy by four and a half percent, which what you'll see in the, the proposed budget is that, I think this is the first year that we've actually done this, some years, the, the impact per household has gone down for $100,000, other years, it maybe has crept up slightly, this year is actually exactly the same, which basically means that the change in the EAB is also projected to be four and a half percent, so our, the change in the EAB, the change in levy are projected to both be four and a half percent, and the, um, the average cost per user, uh, per $100,000 of value in the home is going to stay the same, and if we do adopt this at $67, $67 cents, um, does anyone have any questions, comments, thoughts, Jen and Julie's absence, do you have any, anything you'd like to add before we proceed with the budget?
Um, I think we summarized that perfectly.
Okay, thank you, I like that. Does anyone have, I know this is the third month that we've looked at this, if we all aren't, and lest anybody thinks we're speeding to an end on this, we have this time or something, because of the clock or something, we discussed it extensively in three months. Right, we've all had the opportunity to look at it for three months, it's consistent with prior years, um, I've told Julie this, each year, I think our job gets a little bit easier in adopting these, because she kind of has an idea of what we're looking for, and Before Julie, Julie, we, we.
We're down.
We're, we're close to adopting the budget.
Yes.
I thought there was four and a half percent, the levy, the, um, the EAB, that's all same, same, and is there anything you'd like to add? I think we're ready, um, this is the third month we've looked at this, we've discussed, is there anything you'd like to add before we move forward with?
Um, just that the EAB thing is always an estimate, it could be, if the EAB, um, increase is actually higher, then that tax rate will actually be lower than what we're looking at, we don't anticipate that it would be lower, or if it is lower than 4.5%, it'll be like tiny, tiny amount, um, we do anticipate that that's a pretty solid number.
We have a motion, or Dave, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the budget?
No, Eric, no.
Do I need to read this? Uh, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2022 library fund levy of $5,862,439, library fund expenditure, expenditure budget of $6,104,879, library cash replacement fund expenditure budget of $411,600 as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget and levy as presented, that has been seconded, Caitlin, can you proceed to roll call, please?
Tessie, yes. Tessie, yes. Tessie, yes.
Yes.
Tessie, yes. Tessie, yes. President, yes.
Yes, thank you very much, we have approved the fiscal year 2022 budget levy, Julie, do you want to let us know how Agenda Item 9D, the COVID-19 response and phase reopening plan is going to go?
Well, we are back to indoor masking, uh, requirement for all, we have not gone back to the zero tolerance, that is just really hard on everyone, so instead, um, at the suggestion of one of our management team members who had heard it from another library, we have gone to, um, refusal of service to anyone, go face-to-face service to anyone who refuses to wear a mask in the building, um, we do have masks available for folks at all of our public service points, and by and large, this has, this has just been a, a really easy, uh, fix, most people just wear their mask, um, and most people will put their mask on for five minutes if they need to talk to a staff member, even if they don't necessarily want to wear a mask just to get that help, particularly in the computer area, so.
The library will be closing in five minutes.
And other than that, we're in a punt, when the, it's easier if someone else makes changes.
All right. Okay, do we have a motion to approve, to, uh, the library director be reauthorized to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president within the parameters of the COVID-19 response and reopening phase and plan as presented?
Seven.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 9D, the COVID-19 response and phase reopening plan, has been seconded, Caitlin, can you proceed to roll call, please?
Tessie, yes. Tessie, yes. Tessie, yes.
Yes.
Tessie, yes.
Yes, thank you very much, we have approved the COVID-19 response and phase reopening plan as presented, we're out on to Agenda Item Number 10, the library director's report.
Uh, just three things, really quickly, um, Green V Electric will be starting the LED retrofit and light controls project, um, within the next six weeks or so, as soon as all the materials are, um, received, and you, that will actually happen while the library is open, so there will be, uh, like, little, little tiny areas closed off as they're working on lights, and then Ian is, Ian Nor, our building operations director, will be meeting with the guys from Chicago Light Works and Fitzgerald Electric about the relay panel, um, plan, we, uh, we do believe that, that we have a solid plan moving forward, um, and Chicago Light Works is the, um, the equipment, uh, provider, so they are coming out to meet with them to make sure that everything's going to work as well as we think it will, and then last but certainly not least, a reminder that the September 7th, Tuesday night, uh, committee of the whole meeting that is training only for you all does start at 6:00 PM, so that is anticipated to be 6:00 to 9:00 PM, don't forget, so. That's all we have.
Okay, thank you, do we have any, we're now onto Agenda Item Number 11, do we have any trustee comments or requests for information?
I guess that one, like, what I'll say really fast, do we have any more information about the, um, in charge, person in charge, I know he was going to present, read it to you, but I just wanted, I just wanted to bring out that we have talked about that, I don't have a chance.
Yes, Ian, okay, Ian and Jen and I had a meeting, we have a, a model that we think will work, and we will be discussing it with the management team on September 7th, um, so we, we believe we've got some solutions here.
Just, just to make sure that I have it in my calendar, the date was September 7th at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
It is Tuesday after Labor Day.
Okay.
So you get back from your lovely Labor Day meetings, and then we all get along.
Okay. Sounds good, um, any additional trustee comments or requests for information?
I have a comment, two questions.
Okay.
First one, I'll keep, I'll keep. First one, congratulations, Dave.
Yes.
Yes, congratulations.
Um, some people have had those, the lockers, been there, but they're not, are they operational?
Um, they, we are working on staff training and getting the rep, so the actual, like, lovely signage part on it, so we will go live to the public as soon as the rep is on, and it should be, we should have everyone trained by then.
Um, and my final question was about a social intern, and why did they still, you know, if it was part of their program to do evaluation for time here, but it's part of our time to do evaluation, and how that pursuit was like, and how, you know, that program is working for the next batch of interns.
And they did do, as an interview with, um, Lizzie Matkowski, our adult team services manager, who is, uh, their supervisor while they're here, um, in addition, the, they also, uh, the outgoing interns left a large amount of information, welcome letters, how to's for the incoming interns, so we're working to make those smooth transition.
Any additional requests or requests for information? Okay, and.
The library is now.
This is good, that name.
It's crazy.
Well, I vote during the meeting, thank you very much, everyone.